I'm Kathleen Zastro, the district clerk, and on behalf of the district, I'm happy to announce that we have six candidates running for three open seats on the Board of Education. I'd like to thank all of the candidates for being here so the community can hear their views. Special thanks to Dave and Brian at PCTV. Thanks also to Amy Thomas, Executive Director of Monroe County School Boards Association, who is serving as moderator this evening. I'll turn it over to Amy, and we can begin.
Thanks, Kathleen. As Kathleen said, my name is Amy Thomas, and I'm the Executive Director of Monroe County School Boards Association, and it's my pleasure to be here this evening to be your moderator. This year, the annual Penfield Central School District Budget Vote and School Board Election will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Penfield High School West Gym at 25 High School Drive. And as Kathleen said, this year, we have six candidates running for three seats. Our candidates in ballot order are Megan Callen, Patrick Moriarty, Sarah Pace, James Ashby, Chris Dorsso, and Kristen Harley. Serving as a board member of the Board of Education is an honor and a responsibility. This community entrusts its school board with very important duties. Board members must provide for the education of the community's children, they must see that the property and finances of the district are properly managed, and they must ensure that the many laws governing education are followed. The community elects their school board members, their local officials, who serve without pay and give hundreds of hours to their duties. Each candidate will give an opening statement this evening of up to two minutes long in ballot order. So Megan will start us off, followed by Patrick, Sarah, James, Chris, and Kristen. After that, I'll ask questions that each candidate will take a turn to answer first. Answers should not exceed two minutes. When there are 30 seconds remaining in the candidate's allotted time, a yellow card will be shown to the candidate. When time is up, a red card will be shown. After the question and answer portion of the presentation, candidates will be able to make a closing statement of not more than two minutes. Those summations will be made in reverse order from the opening statements. So candidates, are we ready?
Ready.
Okay. It is time for opening statements. So with that, we're going to start with Megan.
Thank you. Hello, and good evening. Thank you to Amy and Kathleen and our Penfield TV crew, along with my fellow candidates. I commend all of us. Thank you to those that have signed my petition and hosted lawn signs. My name is Megan Callen, and I am deeply committed to fostering educational excellence and equity for the students of our district. I've been a resident in the Penfield School District for nearly 16 years. Throughout my professional journey, I've been a staunch advocate for social justice and equitable educational opportunities. I firmly believe that every child, regardless of their background, deserves access to high-quality education in a supportive and inclusive environment. As a candidate for the Penfield School Board, I am dedicated to collaborating with families, teachers, administrators, and community members to ensure that our schools embody these values and provide a nurturing experience for all. This is not easy work. I'm a parent of three children, elementary, middle, and high school, and parenting is one of the dominant identities in my life and the strongest reason why I am running. There are emotional highs and lows as we navigate the complexities of guiding another person through life, and we're constantly grappling with our own values and beliefs, striving to impart them to our children while also encouraging them to develop their own sense of objectivity and empathy. The social impact of parenting extends beyond our immediate family, influencing how our children interact with the world and how do they contribute to society. Their education is a huge part of that process. In the U.S., education is a right, not a privilege. I want to be empowered as a parent, I want our students to be empowered, and I want to trust and believe in the experts that lead our educational system. And so, I want to be a part of that. Relationship building, data review, understanding context, both of historical impact and today's social norms and policies. We want educational excellence, and we want differentiated experiences that meet our students where they are, all while in a public education system. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Patrick?
Good evening. I'm Patrick Moriarty, and I wanted to begin also by thanking everybody for being here tonight. Another evening out is not always easy, and that's for the two people of Kathleen and Amy in front of us and the people that are behind the scenes. I also want to thank all of you who are watching this program tonight. I appreciate your interest in this election process and hope we can provide you the information to support you in making a knowledgeable decision. I am a retired educator who has extensive experience in public education. I taught for 17 years as an earth science teacher and coached almost 35 athletic teams. I was a school assistant principal for three years in West Arundicoy and finished my career in Fairport as a principal. Some people may recognize me for a recent story in several media sources as a teacher who asked students to join me to watch the eclipse on April 8th. I initially made that invitation 46 years ago, and I have been fortunate to have heard from hundreds of students. This truly is a testament to how teachers can make an impact on the lives of our children. I have been a resident in the Penfield School District for 25 years. My daughter, her husband, and my three grandchildren also live in Penfield, and my grandkids attend school here. All of the grandparents watching know, as I know, how absolutely important it is for our grandkids to have a quality, caring, and safe school experience. My wife and I have enjoyed all of our interactions with Penfield School and Town programs, watching our grandchildren in music and athletic and school musical performances. I am running for the board because I absolutely love this district. I want to support the leadership. I really like the work of Thomas Putnam. I think he is amazing. With these three seats on the school board, I feel it's important for our district to have a person like me who brings experience, balance, and understanding of the importance of the people who impact our children and the influence a member of the school board can have. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Sarah?
Thank you, Amy and Kathleen. My name is Dr. Sarah Pace, and I'm excited to announce my candidacy for the Penfield Board of Education. As a wife of a teacher and coach in the district, a local business owner, and of course, a mother of students in the district, my commitment to the Penfield community runs deep, and I position myself uniquely to meet and interact and build relationships in a very diverse way. As a board member, I would pledge to work diligently to support policies and initiatives that will prioritize the success and well-being of both students and educators. I believe it's important to foster an environment where students have a vested interest in their learning journey, while we, as district leaders, guide them and teach them accountability, resilience, work ethic, all skills they will need for their future success. To accomplish this, understandably, I have a lot to learn about current policies and structures in place, but while doing so, it is my vision to promote and foster enhanced communication, transparency, and accountability within the district, while also advocating for all voices in our community. I would be greatly honored to serve on the Penfield School Board, and I ask for your support and trust on this journey.
Thank you, Sarah. James?
Good evening. Excuse me. I'm excited to be running for the Penfield Board of Education. As a dedicated member of this community, I am committed to fostering a learning environment where every student has the opportunity to thrive academically and personally. My primary focus as a board member will be to elevate academic success and rigor and expand opportunities for all students. Education is a cornerstone of our society, and it's imperative that we ensure every child receives a quality education tailored to their individual needs. One crucial aspect of achieving that, of achieving this goal, is the retention and attraction of top-level teachers to our district. It's concerning that we have a higher-than-average rate of inexperienced teachers and alarmingly high turnover of principals. We need to delve into the root cause of this issue and implement strategies to support and empower our educators, providing them with the tools and resources they need to excel in their roles. Furthermore, I am committing to creating a culture of equity and accountability within our schools. Every student deserves equal opportunities to succeed, regardless of their background or circumstances. However, accountability is vital in this. We must encourage and support our students to take ownership of their learning journey while providing them with the necessary support and guidance along the way. As a member of the Penfield Board of Education, I will work tirelessly to advocate for policies and initiatives that prioritize the success and well-being of our students and educators. Together, we can build a brighter future for our next generation. I humbly, which many people know is a stretch for me, ask for your support and trust as we embark on this journey together. James Allen Ashby.
Thanks, James. Chris?
Good evening. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Kathleen. Thanks to my fellow folks running. My name is Chris Dorsso. He/him/his pronouns. I am very excited to be here. I am a proud parent of two Penfield High School students and devoted husband to my wife. My entire professional career has been spent in the service of education, and I am ready to use that knowledge and that expertise to serve the school district that we have called home for years, a district that we chose when we moved to this area many years ago, specifically for the opportunities that the schools would provide for our kids. I am currently the Director of Marketing Communications for Advancement, for RIT, but prior to that, I spent 22 years in enrollment management at four different SUNY campuses. I have always been a passionate advocate, excuse me, for public education. As I made the move professionally from SUNY to RIT last year, I realized how much I really missed working with the public schools, and when this opportunity came up, this is an opportunity to really live that by doing good work for my community because I love it and not just because it's who signs my paycheck. Public education, as James said, it's our most important community resource, and we're remarkably fortunate here in Penfield to have a school system that is strong and well-supported. We have the opportunity to be a model district, not just for Monroe County, but for all suburban districts. My goal in running for a seat on the board will be to ensure that the hard work done by our faculty and our staff and our students are supported so that we can truly provide the best future. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Kristen?
Good evening. Thank you, Amy and Kathleen, for hosting tonight, and thank you for Penfield TV. I'd like to thank everyone that is joining us live tonight or for catching up with the recording later. We appreciate you being an informed voter. I am Kristen Harley, and I would be honored to continue to represent you on the Penfield School Board. As an elementary teacher in the West Arundicoyt District for the past 23 years and as a current board member for the last three years, I've been advocating for children every single day. I believe strongly in public education. I know I can continue to be an asset to the school board here in Penfield. As a teacher, I work tirelessly to ensure all students' needs are met, and I promise to do the same here for all the stakeholders in Penfield, the children, the families, our faculty and staff, and all of our community members. I promise to continue to ask the really hard questions and always ask, what is best for all kids? Penfield schools are highly revered in Monroe County. It's really why my husband and I chose to move to Penfield 17 years ago. We are doing some great things here in Penfield, but we still have a lot of work to do to keep moving that needle, to ensure that all of our students are feeling welcomed and affirmed. It's imperative that when our children walk out of our doors every single day, that they are, that we are doing everything in our power to make sure that they feel seen, valued, and respected. We have six children, four that are graduates of Penfield and two are currently still part of the student body. We have a senior here at the high school and also a sophomore. This has really helped us to, me to have a really good pulse on what's going on in the community, and through the years, we've established positive relationships with many faculty, staff, and a variety of stakeholders here in Penfield. As a member of the board, I will continue to listen empathetically and seek to understand all voices, and will always keep our children's best interests as my first priority. We are Penfield Strong, and we are that when we work collaboratively to do what is best for all kids.
Thank you, Kristen. So it's now time for the question and answer portion of the evening. A reminder to all of you that the answers should not exceed two minutes. When there are 30 seconds remaining in the candidate's allotted time, a yellow card will be shown to the candidate. When the time is up, you'll see the red card. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer questions first on a rotating basis, and feel free to have any questions that I ask repeated if you need that. So we're going to begin with Megan. Megan, the first question is, please explain what motivated you to run for the Penfield School Board and the perspective that you bring to the board table?
Sure. So as I said in my opening statement, it really is my own children, I think, that most inspired me to run. I did plan on doing this just about a year ago. I have worked on several board campaigns with folks that I wanted to really support to get on the Penfield School Board, and because for me, it is such a cornerstone, as many of the candidates have said, of our community, and also one of the reasons that I moved here 16 years ago, I liked the fact that as a member of a school board, you can take on the role that is in a leadership space. I appreciate what Kristen said about having children in the district and having a pulse on that, and as my junior is the oldest, I thought to myself, and in all three schools, I have a kid there, now's the time. I feel that my perspective that I can bring to the board is one of experience in terms of my educational journey myself, but also in my career. There are a lot of parents on the board, so I'm very appreciative of that, and I do think it's a critical piece. But I also want to make sure that we're representing the community at large, and I've been involved in the community across Penfield, various different committees and groups, and I think it's really important as a member of Penfield to be involved in the school district again as one of the highlights of our community. So I think we all have different ways to lend our perspectives into this board, and I believe that I can do a good job, and I'm excited about it. You have to have passion along with that. So thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Patrick, same question. Do you need that repeated?
No, I'm outside.
Okay.
Well, what motivated me is I have three grandchildren here in the district, and as everybody is sitting here, we all just love our kids. And I have so much experience in education that over the years, many, many people have turned to me and said, Pat, will you run for the board? Will you run for the board? And I never felt I really needed to because it looked, it looked like everything was pretty balanced and was in great shape. And it still looks that way, but what scared me is having three open seats when you have only seven people on the board. So I thought, well, this could really change this year then with three open seats. So I decided this is the year I'm going to run. I have, having the three grandkids, and I just want to make sure that things continue the way they are. I really enjoy the Penfield School District. I have experience with a lot of different school districts, and this school district is very fortunate to have leadership that knows what they're doing, puts out great communication, and is experienced with working with the teachers and working with the parents and the entire community. I have 33 years in education. I have a lot of experience in working in school districts, both as a teacher and as an administrator, and I really feel that this district has something really special, and I want to maintain it, and I want to be a part of it, and I want to be a cheerleader for all the good things that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Sarah?
Yes. So I have a son who graduated from Penfield High School in 2021, so he's 21 years old now, and I have two daughters, 14 and 9. And just over the last three years, I've noticed, noticed post-COVID, some things have kind of declined in our district. I think we've kind of taken a shift away from academic emphasis, and I'm looking to bring that back. I think our kids deserve a quality education, all of our children deserve a quality education, and I just want to make sure that that's happening with our policies and procedures across the board. And I just think we need to take back accountability with some of our kids. I think it's important that we teach them resilience and life skills because the other job of our education is to provide them not only with the academics excellence, but also teach them character-building skills that's going to help them with later on in life, whether they go to college, whether they're going to go to a trade, whether they're going into the workforce. I think that's another big piece, that's a big part of our public education, and I want to make sure that that's happening across our district. And also, looking at the teacher surveys, that teachers don't really feel comfortable. I have less than 50% responded favorably if asked about referring someone to work in the district, and our teachers are our backbone. I want them to have an environment where they want to teach our kids and they want to grow and foster our children, and I think right now, that's not happening in our district, and I want to find ways to make that happen.
Thanks, Sarah. James?
Yeah. At the Monroe County School Board Association, they mentioned that schools are run, schools are businesses, right? And in my professional life, I lead, I have a leadership role, and I know that without the people under me, I wouldn't be successful. And to Sarah's point, I, you know, I, I believe that there's something going on that we're losing some of that talent, and I believe that we do have a good school district. I have a 10th grader who had received a very different education than my 4th grader is right now, and I want to understand why. And that not knowing really motivated me to learn, right? I'm here to learn and understand more why. Along with that, I've seen a lot of change that I don't understand. A lot of it is in the name of, of social things that are going on. A lot of it I agree with, a lot of it I don't. We are not where we were pre-COVID, and I think we've had enough time to learn, to adjust, to see the data, to see the results of the changes we've made, and I don't think that we're adjusting in a way that is actually taking that data in. And I guess one thing that bothers me personally is that, you know, I'm lucky enough that I have a family that we, we have a lot of opportunities within the school, within this community, and I can provide for that. And I think about the kids who may not have those same opportunities, who can't hire private tutors to make up for that academic loss, who can't hire the private coaches to help them outside of school, who don't have all that support, right? And as a school district, we're trying to support that, and I think we really need to stand behind that.
Thanks, James. Chris?
Thanks. So for me, the motivation, for me, comes from, again, as I noted, being passionate about the, the public education experience. I think that, as others have said, this is a good district. This is a district that, when we moved here, we moved here, as I said, because of the school district, and we moved from an area where the taxes were really high, and the assumption when we moved here was that, from, from downstate, was that, oh, well, the taxes must be much lower there. And it's not the case. We have a pretty reasonable tax load here, but we get stuff for our taxes, and the schools are supported here in ways that we've seen other places in the state where they're not. And so, I think for, for me, the motivation to help drive that is, is what really makes me want to make this jump. You know, as I said, I'm an educator, I'm a communicator, I believe in the, the student experience, regardless of whatever professional role I've had. I think for us as parents, you know, many school districts, Penfield not, certainly not an exception, for students who fit nicely into the box and do what needs to be done, this is a really fantastic place to be. If you can get your homework done and you can do what you need to do, this is great. But there's challenges. There's challenges with communication, there's challenges with, you know, our teachers, as others have said, are burdened. It's hard to be a teacher right now, and, you know, our role as the board is to help make this a good place for, for all of us, and I think that's the, the piece that I'm trying to bring to the board.
Thanks, Chris. Kristen?
Yeah, I think, agree with what most people have said, like, it's my kids. That's what motivated me to run initially. My plan, I always said to my husband when I decided to run three years ago, like, when the kids are out of school, like, I'm going to run for the school board, I want to give back to my community, and then I was like, well, why would I wait till my kids are no longer part of it? Like, let's be a part of it. So it's my children first was my motivation. Public education, like, I just believe so strongly in the impact that we can have to really move kids to reach their highest potential and be their best self, and that looks different for every single child. And then just also, like, as a family, we just really believe strongly in being positive community members and giving back at that level. My husband is very involved, and we just like to model for our children what we hope they also do when they're adults, so just being that role model for my kiddos. The perspective I bring is, you know, 23 years as a teacher in a public education, I know what it's like to go in the classroom every single day, I know what it was like pre-COVID, I know what it was like COVID, and I know the challenges that we're still facing post-COVID. There are still many challenges that teachers are facing, that children, some of our kids have not bounced back yet. We still have a lot of repercussions from that. I know what it's like to walk in those doors every single day. And in addition to that, like, we're a big family, we're a blended family. I have six kiddos, three are, I call them mine, I didn't give birth to them, but three children that are black, and we have three children that are biracial, so their experiences look very different, and I want to make sure that all kids feel, like I said earlier, that they feel seen and valued and respected in, in an environment that's warm and welcoming.
Thanks, Kristen. Okay, we're on to question number two. Patrick, you're going to be first up here. Penfield currently embraces the whole-child philosophy. What are your thoughts on programs and classes that incorporate the arts? And if you're elected as a Board of Education member, will you continue supporting and increasing the funding needed to maintain the arts in Penfield schools?
I, I completely embrace all of the programs that happen in schools, and music and the arts have always been a very important component of the school. One of the things that I have noticed over the years is that the kids that participate in the music programs, there's, there's, there's a level of brain development that happens with playing instruments and just even in the, in the chorus, that kids can get with that, that helps them with overall learning and also their experiences later in life. I've also loved the fact that it's not only entertaining, but our kids have a place that they can call theirs. It happens on the athletic teams where you can say, I'm a part of a team. When people are in the music programs, they also feel that, that sensation of belonging and being a part of a team. So there's a lot of benefits to the music programs, and there's a lot of benefits to supporting the music programs. One of the things that also came out in Search Institute through research is that when you talk to, look at programs that help students in their sense of belonging and staying away from dangerous behaviors, the one component, the one thing in schools that, that is, actually shows evidence of helping students are students that belong to the music program. So there is that connection, and I think that's a very, very important connection, and it's always important to keep that. I love also the programs that we do with stage, on the stage, and some of the directors that they do here, from younger grades all the way up to the older grades. It is incredible what these kids get out of that and the support that they get for going to their colleges as well.
Thank you, Patrick. Sarah?
Yes. I think it is huge to keep the music and arts component in the school districts. It develops the children, like Patrick said. Myself, I was never a strong music and art student. I was more of the left brain instead of the right brain, so I think it's important that we do develop both sides. Like he said, it does create a difference, and it just creates more well-rounded students. I think it gives them more discipline, and it puts them, a lot of us, like me, takes us out of our comfort zone, and I think that's going to help them later on in life because you're going to be challenged when you get outside into the workforce, into college, and I think maybe trying something that you're not normally comfortable with, if music and art isn't your strong suit, that's, it's great, and I think every student should have to partake in some type of music or art class, and I am a strong proponent of continuing that.
Thanks, Sarah. James, same question.
Yeah, so there's two parts to this question, and I'm not sure that I think that they're actually the same topic, right? You mentioned the whole child and then brought up the arts. To me, I think those are two separate topics, right? They're correct. Penfield always talks about the whole child and the whole student. And I guess what that triggered in my, my mind is, what does that mean to the person asking the question? What does it mean to other people, right? To me, it means something different. Obviously, when they think whole child by their second part of the question, they think arts and music probably extra curricular, right? That's what they see as the whole child. So that kind of triggers, it's a self-reflection, right? And, and that's kind of something that I'm kind of wondered why they felt the need to ask this question. Is there something going on that I don't know why they're worried about arts or music? I know last year, maybe the year before now, there was a big push on social media because the music, music department and the music program was being changed, and that wasn't being communicated in a way that was clear, and I've never seen so many people come together to support music. Recently, there was a fifth, we received, like, I think, our 15th second year as a community that supports music. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't change that. My, my son did Suzuki for years, no longer does it, and I know that that was probably one of the biggest challenges he had. He does very well in school, does very well in sports, but challenging him in music was something that he, he really thrived in, and that's something he needed. And it's Pat- And as Pat stated, it's part of their identity, right? People come together around music, come together around sports. It's a community thing. I wouldn't see why expanding it as much as we can responsibly would be it, right? And bringing creative other ways to do it.
Thanks, James. Chris?
It's funny that you mention that about the whole child thing, because I thought the same thing. I was like, oh, that question took a left turn that I did not expect it to take. So when it comes to the arts, I can't imagine not supporting the arts as a general rule. Again, we came from a district that didn't, and one of the first things that struck us when we went to our first concert in the middle school was about halfway through, my wife said, you know what? No one's, there's no 50-50 raffle to support the arts. There's no join the friends in music, because otherwise we're not going to have a music program, because they support it here, and that's fantastic. And I can't imagine not. And that said, I think there's so much that goes into it, because, again, our personal experience, our kids are arts and theater kids, right? Our son is a singer, and he's done theater. Our daughter's a tech crew kid, and she was a singer in middle school. And when we got her to the high school, we had assumed she would continue with chorus. She liked to sing. It suddenly didn't fit her schedule because of the support services that she needed. And it really kind of threw us into a hole, and we said, do we make a bad decision? Like, how can we support our daughter in the stuff that she loves and yet also get her the academic supports that she needs? The luck, as it turned out, was that it wound up pushing her into an art class that has absolutely been where she's found her passion, in taking woodworking and metalwork and 3D design and all this kind of stuff that even just two years ago was never on the radar for her. And as a kid who was, we assumed, was very, very academic and college-focused, all of a sudden, like, we're now saying, yeah, this is a kid who's going to go into something art. And we love that, and that would not have happened without the way that the district made that happen.
Thanks, Chris. Kristen?
Yeah, so I would absolutely continue to support the arts and music here in Penfield as a school board. We've always looked at the whole child. That's always part of our lens. Art and music being a portion of it, I agree with also what James and Chris said. Like, when I heard whole child, I was thinking multi-level tiers of support. But yeah, art and music is absolutely a piece of that. We're fortunate here in Penfield to have a really well-respected music program. And also our art department, the, I agree with what Chris said as well, the variety of electives that our kids have access to, I think, is incredible. I have a kiddo at home that really thrives in that. He's not your typical, like, paper and pencil kind of kiddo. He's a very hands-on, and sometimes that's where he feels the most joy for the day, is when he's really just in that moment, doing what he loves to do. So I think it does go back to, yes, absolutely, but also I think it connects with what Patrick said, like, that's where some of our kids find their greatest joy, and also with how that's a different part of our brain, that those kids also need to be developing. And also to what James says, of, it's really part of some of our kids' identity. That's part of who they are. As a district, when we talk every child, we mean every kid, and that means we need to be putting our money in all of these places to support every child getting what they need.
Thanks, Kristen. Megan, same question.
Sure. So at first, I thought being the first person to answer might be a little difficult, but now I'm thinking maybe it's the last person to answer. I think that, I echo, I don't think anyone is up here that would say they're against the arts and music in our schools. I would hope not. But I agree. I think that the opportunity for skill building, that is transferable skills, but the sense of belonging, I think that Pat said, the sense of community, the sense of identity that others have said, is really critical to a lot of our young people, to their development overall. And I feel like here at Penfield, we do value that. I haven't experienced yet where we haven't. But to be able to give those resources, this is about access and equity as well, to give those resources included in your school day, not after school, not an extra additional cost, is really important to make sure that we are leveling the playing field for access and opportunity to all of our students. So I've had great value. My kids the same. Each one of them has played an instrument, not always successfully, but we did it done in chorus, definitely not very successfully, but I love you guys. And as well as the theater, stage crew alike, which has really proved, again, to find a little culture for yourself, a little group of community that I think only leads to self-worth for young people. And it's another opportunity to showcase talent and skill, and I think that helps tremendously with confidence building, and again, that esteem piece. So I'm on board, and I fully support our arts and our music programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. And you're right, being last is not easy. Okay, the next question, we're beginning with Sarah. "Sarah, what is your position on the current direction of the district? Specifically, what is one initiative you would continue to support? And what is an initiative and/or area you believe Penfield could improve upon?"
I think we do a great job at including all students and meeting them where they're at and providing every child with a quality education that they deserve. So I would continue to support initiatives and policies that make that happen in our district. And a thing that I think we can improve on is, like I mentioned before, is just taking a shift back and putting a more emphasis on our academics, helping our children that maybe need extra resources, like RTI. Do we need to, you know, provide more teachers for the RTI program that kids are struggling academically? Reading comprehension, I know, is a struggle right now in the elementary schools. And do we need to provide more enrichment? I've known some of our families that have left our district and gone to private schools because they don't feel their children are being challenged enough. So I think it's a fine balance that we do need to provide for all of our students. So I do think we do need to take a big look into those two things for our district.
Thank you. James, same question.
Can you repeat it, please?
Yes. "What is your position on the current direction of the district? Specifically, what is one initiative you would continue to support? And what is an initiative and/or area you believe Penfield could improve upon?"
So two parts to that question. Obviously, as is stated, right, I think we all here, in some way or another, agree with and disagree with the direction of the district, right? I am one of those families that considered leaving the district because of enrichment for my son. I worked with another family to bring back double acceleration based on my son coming out of COVID and him needing that. I had a wonderful experience with that, and it really proved to me that we can make a change. And there are people in this district that are listening and will work together with the parents. But again, the direction of the district is obviously, if it were perfect, and I would agree with it, I wouldn't be sitting here today. So I, some things that I would support, obviously enrichment, right? That's self-serving. But on the other end of that is special education, right? I have three very different children that learn three very different ways, and they all have three very different experiences. My oldest does very well in maintaining what she needs, but getting the help that she needs as a self-motivated student is getting more and more difficult because of the situations that are going on in the schools. Going to get help is now a chore for her. So we actually have hired private tutors that she can text during the day. So now she's relying on that. That bothers me. My son is double-accelerated in math and is bored. And then, again, my fourth grader has had four different primary classroom teachers this year, four. So as a fourth grader, I can't possibly think that this year is to the level that we would expect as parents. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Chris?
I think, you know, as we sort of alluded to earlier, I think the variety of opportunities that we can afford to give our students is something that is a hallmark of what we are as a district. And I think it's special that we can offer the kinds of electives and the kinds of opportunities in the arts and sports and all the kinds of the BOSI's programs and the opportunities to do career-focused learning at the high schools and things like that. Those are the kinds of opportunities that are gold. And I say this as someone who works in higher ed. Higher ed isn't for every student, even at a wealthy suburban district. It just isn't. And so I think the fact that we continue to support that wide array of scheduling, choices, and options will only benefit us moving forward. That said, all the challenges that do come with that, and I think one of the struggles that we've had, much as James said, like, our two kids could not be more different in how they interact with the school experience. And for, you know, our son, who gets his work done and does what he has to do, he's done very, very well. And our daughter has struggled, because she will complete her work, and it'll sit in her backpack for a week and a half, not hand it in, because she forgets to hand it in. And then all of a sudden, it's two weeks later, and it pops up in the parent portal as missing, and we're not there during the day. Like, we're working, we can't physically yank it out of her bag and give it to her teacher. But the teachers have got 150 students to work through, and they've got teams, and they've got the parent portal, and they've got everything else. There's a million communication pieces. And so I think finding a way to put a framework so that we can try to streamline communications, make communication easier between parents and students and teachers, so that we're all really on the same page, I think is something that I'd be very interested in working towards.
Thanks, Chris. Kristen?
Yeah, so I would say that, similar to what I said in my opening statement, we've done some things really great here in Penfield, but we still have some work to do. I think that's important to recognize, that we have growth to make. I would say this year, the one thing that I'm really proud that the district did was continue that specialized continuum, where now we have 811s in our buildings, and our 1211s, and our ICT. So if we have our kids that have needs or not having to shift buildings, if they need to go to a least restrictive, a lesser restrictive environment, we're not changing their homeschool. I think that's really important for those kiddos that need more support, and they're some of our neediest population of kiddos. So I think that's a great shift that we made this year. As far as something that I would really like to see improved upon is, as a board member, I've heard a lot about the culture and climate in some of our buildings, and also as a parent, I've heard it. I think we have a lot of work to do around making sure our children feel they're safe. They feel that they are seen, that we are making sure that harmful language isn't occurring that's making them feel uncomfortable going to school. We want them, let's be honest, they spend more time at school than they do in their homes. So this should be a place that they come where they feel safe every day, where they have great joy and they want to return every day. So I think we have a lot of work to do with that. It's a district piece. It's partnering with our families and educating our families. But that's my biggest thing, is I really want our kids to feel safe and feel seen at schools and feel as if they're not being harmed while they're here.
Thanks, Kristen. Megan?
Yes, I think I agree with what everyone is saying in general. Penfield, I'm here as a parent because I believe in this district, and I think we do a lot of things really well. I think one thing that we've been very good at is really is an innovation hub in a lot of ways. So I, we talked about the electives. I know my child took jewelry-making class. I mean, the opportunities and access you have in this district, I think, is at a very high level. We're about to launch the AP African-American Studies Program, which is one of the first across the county, and I think that's phenomenal. We talked a lot about the voice of families coming to the table, and as much as we may have had challenges as parents in communication, I don't think a door is necessarily shut in our face if you're asked to, if you're invited to really have a true conversation. That said, I agree with Kristen in the sense of culture in the school buildings and communication. I think it has its positives and its challenges here in the district. One thing that I would like us to focus on in terms of communication is really transparency around closing the loop of situations. So recently, we've had some, and over the past several years, some situations that have happened, incidences, that I believe the district is trying to address and communicate to families that they're trying to address, but I think we need to get tighter. I think we need to develop a better rubric around communication and protocols. And I think we need to help families and students understand how it's closed, how the situation is closed, not in the sense of revealing confidentiality or personnel issues, but that there was a process that was followed. This is what it was, and here's how we handled it, and continue, because I think trust building, sorry, trust building is the most important thing that we can have within the district.
Thanks, Megan. Patrick?
Everybody is right. Going last is not so easy. But you know, also, I had a chance to learn things as I'm sitting here, listening to all the people that have some experience with what is going on, and I really appreciate the learning process I'm having tonight. I'm just going to get very specific. One of the things that I absolutely love, and I saw with all three of my grandkids, is in their kindergarten program, right now is the time of the year that all of a sudden the kids are reading to us from kindergarten. I have never seen that in any place that I have been. So something is happening in the reading program and how the reading program is structured here in this district that really supports early reading and successful reading with these children. On Sunday, my kindergarten granddaughter came up to me and said, Papa, can I read this book to you? And I was like, sure. And she pulled it up, and I watched her sound out words, and I watched her use her phonics. And I know it's not just a phonics process, but she was using it, but there's something else that they're doing here that's so well-done with the reading program. Early reading is essential for the kid's success. Something I would work on, just as I'm going around getting signatures, I'm hearing from many people, not just a few, concern about the rigor of classes and concerned about what happened after COVID, and I've heard other people mention this tonight, what happened after COVID and the dropping of some of the honors programs. So I am concerned about that. I'm concerned about the grading policy. I want to review that with whoever's talking, who's responsible for it. Why are kids getting 50% when they're handing in absolutely nothing? I want to find out about that, and I want to see what that's all about. I'm more into the authentic grading. I'm more into working with authentic homework policy along with the authentic grading, and I'm hoping that that works for us.
Thank you. Sarah? Oh, no, sorry. See, I'm even losing track of where we are. My goodness. All right, on to the next question. So the next question, we're beginning with James. So James, this question starts with you. "Do you support the district's proposed budget? If so, please explain why. If not, what changes would you make?"
So, I love that I got this question. So I have the budget line by line, right? I'm probably the only one that went line by line and looked at all the changes. The way that budget's presented to the public is based on trust, right? They trust that the Board of Education has reviewed it, you know, our superintendent of finance has presented it well, and that it's needing, it's meeting the vision of our district and the direction of our community that wants it to go. I, you know, I support a budget. It's such a weird question to me to ask, yes, I support a budget. I support a budget at school, just like I do at home, right? Do I support this budget? I don't know, right? And I think that's, again, going to, you know, I'm a details guy. I do project management at work. You know, I see some alarming things this year, right? We all know traveling's expensive. This year's budget went from $5,000 last year to $25,000 this year. So we're spending $20,000 more dollars this year on travel for, I'm not sure, we're spending $20,000 more dollars on curriculum, in the curriculum office for materials, right? I don't know what that means, right? But it stands out. I looked at where we're spending, right? Not just percentages, but, you know, actual dollars. Where does that go, right? And I go back, and I pointed out many times, we failed two audits. 2015, we were overcharging our taxpayers, and in 2022, they came back, the district comptroller came back with an audit, and it didn't look good. And that scares me, right? We are 69% of our public's taxpayers' dollars, and only 2,445 people voted on that. That makes me nervous. So I want to be someone that they can trust to go into the details of the budget.
Thanks, James. Chris?
So I have always been and will continue to be a strong supporter of school budgets. We've seen here in Monroe County what happens when budgets go bad. And the people who suffer ultimately are the students and the faculty and the staff who are doing the work. In a district of our size and scope and level of resources, we have a responsibility to provide the things that our faculty and staff need to do their jobs, that our students need to be supported. That said, I'm a union guy. I've been in a union my whole life, and I will advocate for our unions. It does cost money. You know, personnel is a big chunk of our budget, as it is everywhere, paying salaries and benefits and supporting facilities. and benefits and supporting facilities and resources. It's our role as the school board to provide that support while, at the same time, ensuring that the guidelines and the framework are in place, that the funds are used efficiently. There was a board meeting a month or so ago where the guy from the facilities department was talking about resurfacing of the parking lots. Has to be done every so many years. Costs have gone up. And so, this is, you know, he looked into a bunch of options of, you know, if we do this at this level, how much is going to cost us, what the repair and replacement on that? And so I'm, it's important that the folks who are in the position to actuate our financial plans, we're giving them the tools, and they're providing us with the knowledge that, you know, we can trust that the money that we're spending is going to where it's supposed to be going.
Thanks, Chris. Kristin, same question.
Sure, yes. I do support the budget. I know that we are a multimillion dollar budget in Penfield, we're a large district. We do have an obligation to control the budget. Similar to what Chris said, I think what's really important for people to recognize in the world of education is we're a people business. So our people's salary and our benefits that we are obligated to pay by contractual obligations is 75% of our budget. So that's a huge chunk. And we are, as a district, we do have an obligation to look for ways to save money for our taxpayers, like, that's part of the job that we have to do. And as Chris mentioned, we do have people in the district looking at ways to get more time out of our buses by coding underneath our buses, by looking at the recoding and the ceiling that we're doing in our parking lots that we have to do to maintain, because if we let them go, it ends up costing our taxpayers significantly more money. Dan Driffl is pretty phenomenal at looking at the ins and outs. He's always watching the state budget, when, what, you know, who's proposing what, you know, what the governor's proposing, what the legislators are proposing, and trying to give us an idea. It's a six-month process to a nine-month process, really, to look at the budget. It's not easy to do by any means. For the last two years, we hadn't even increased our taxes. This year, we had to increase a little bit because of our inflation. We are below our tax levy, and when we look at how much our taxes increase, it turns out to be about $17, $18 per like $100,000 of our homes. So it's, overall, it's not a significant amount, but keep in mind that we're a public school and we're obligated to do certain things.
Thanks, Kristin. Megan?
Thank you, yes. So I think nobody can sit here and say, as James pointed out, that this is an easy review. School budgets in New York State in particular are highly complicated, and here in Penfield this year, it's about $120 million. I believe, and I have always supported, similar to what Chris just said, and I will this year, support the budget. I do have faith, and I do have trust in our Assistant Superintendent of Finance. I have attended a couple of meetings or heard them online. I've reviewed some of the budget myself, and I believe that there is great intent and thoughtfulness put into our budget. We all know it to be a moral document, and yet, as Kristin pointed out, we have 75% of our budget already aligned into contracts. And so that does make the parameters different. There are a lot of formulas that the state puts out that are mandated, and it can be challenging. I believe that our Assistant Superintendent has worked with the board, has worked with the rest of the leadership team to do the best that we can with what we have, and I believe that we are always going to challenge by line item possibly some of the decisions and thought that goes into the budget. But I have appreciated the process of engaging the public, of engaging families to establish that. And I will tell you that one thing I do really much appreciate about the budget is resources for mental health in our community, in our schools. Through my own experiences of my children receiving mental health services outside of the school district, I've had at least one therapist tell me that if your child's going to have a mental health challenge, Penfield is the district you want to be in. So I very much appreciate the fact that we have significant resources that go to that within our schools.
Thanks, Megan. Patrick?
I'm just going to say that as a taxpayer, I have not yet seen the budget. I've been waiting to see it when it comes out in the booklet, but I always support the budget. It helps our community to support the budget. It helps the affect of the community when people look at us to know that the budget is supported by the community. It helps bring people in when they know that the community supports the budget. When I saw our taxes go up, I was really concerned suddenly with property taxes going up, what was going to happen with school tax at the time. I called the school district, and the school district turned to me and said, there's a complicated formula, and I know that there is a complicated formula with this. And they had already planned that they were going to work hard to just keep the tax as it was, rather than see it go up corresponding to the town taxes also increasing. So I have a lot of trust. I'm one of those taxpayers that trusts that the people that are working on the budget right here are looking out for the taxpayers on this. And over the years, I have seen a very, very responsible budget come forth for us, and I will always support it.
Thanks, Patrick. Sarah?
I think we can all agree that we all want the best opportunities for our children. And in a perfect world, we would have unlimited resources, but unfortunately, we don't have that. So I just think that it's important, when we are reviewing the budget, that we are taking into consideration that, is this going to help all of our students excel academically and personally? And is it also going to help our teachers, provide them with the resources and tools that they need to help our kids be successful? And I think if we keep that in mind, that we can all kind of come to an agreement of where we need to prioritize certain needs and certain things. So I just think it's important to, you know, go through it, ask questions. Like, he mentioned, there's a big increase in, you know, traveling. Well, what is it for? Could it have been done virtual? What are the topics? Those are all important things when we make those decisions. And I'm looking forward to reviewing and learning about how this budget works.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, the next question. Chris, you're up for being number one this time. What will you do as a Board of Education member to ensure that the budget gives every student a chance to receive all the services they need and the funding necessary to hire experienced teachers and staff to support all students?
That's a layered question. Okay. Repeat it for the benefit of the table.
Okay. What will you do as a Board of Education member to ensure that the budget gives every student a chance to receive all of the services that they need and the funding necessary to hire experienced teachers and staff to support all students?
That is a fantastic question. So I think, you know, as others have said, there's a lot that's tied into the budget that is somewhat immutable in the way that, you know, there are costs that need to be accounted for. I think that, as a district, you know, we've talked a lot about the opportunities for students to participate in the things that drive them, you know, and making sure that our students are learning to become active partners with us as the board, with their families, with the teachers and the staff. And I think that, you know, our role on the board is to, as I said earlier, it's about frameworks and it's about guidelines, right? And so, to ensure that, as we plan the budget, we're listening to the constituencies, we're, you know, we're listening to the concerns that are coming from the students who don't fit in the box, from the students who are struggling, to say, what is it that we can do that can help make sure that students are getting the support, the services, the opportunities that they need, either to, you know, to get to a certain point or to excel, or ideally both. And so I think there's, the power of the board is limited in what we can do day to day, but building policies and frameworks that support the overall educational experience is, I think, where we would be the best use of our time.
Thanks, Chris. Kristin, same question.
Okay. So I think what's really important is that when you are thinking anything in terms of the school district, you're going through that same lens constantly. And then here in Penfield, our lens tries, we try to keep our lens on equity and access for all. And when you're thinking equity and access for all, and you're talking what every child needs, that means making sure there are allocating funds for the arts, for the music, for kids, for SEL, for academics. So there's so many layers to that, and I just think that, as Chris said, it's also really important to make sure you have your stakeholders' voice, including your students. Meg mentioned earlier that we have an AP class for African American Studies. That's coming because we had kids asking for it. So what are we going to do to make that happen? So we're allocating money for that course next year. We are not just the only one, I think, in the county, but in the state, we're one of the few districts offering that. We partnered with SUNY Brockport to do that, to make sure that we're giving our kids access to a class, a college-level course, for something that they asked for. I think it comes back to asking questions, like, how does this go through our lens? How are we addressing all needs of all kids? And when you're asking, like, every child what they need, that's everything. It's very encompassing. It's the arts, it's the music, it's the SEL, it's the academics, it's athletics, like, it's everything, because our kids are identifying with different parts of themselves through different avenues of things that we offer in this district. And we just need to make sure that when we're making our budget, that we're hiring people that can successfully provide these experience for our students, but also giving our kids exactly what they're asking for and what they need.
Thanks, Kristin. Megan?
Yes, and yes. So I believe that, as I said before, I support the budget. I believe that, as it is, that values-based document, and yet, it works, it is operated within a system of policy and state law and contracts. So I think you have to start building that to make sure that you're meeting all the minimum requirements of things that have to go out the door in terms of expenses. And I agree with what my fellow candidates are saying about, and Penfield does, I think, a very strong job of looking at the whole child and making sure that our children are supported in all aspects of what we consider education. The teachers and other educators in the district, I know, have struggled. We all have those elementary school lists that you have to bring in, all of the supplies for the beginning of the school year, not all of them, but the tissue boxes, things like that, right? And we joke about it, at the same time, these are really critical things that we don't want our educators having to put money out of pocket for. So I think as much as we can have that lens that I believe Penfield has done and continues to try to do, is important. The other element that I think we could do, engage our community in as a district, is talking about policy. So if we can't do much in the day-to-day, like Chris said, what is it that we can do to support our school districts across the state in terms of policy change? This is a democracy in our state. How do we activate people because they need to be educated and informed of how these things work, instead of just, well, we can't, we can't, we can't? We need education to help us figure out, how can we support our districts in the budgeting process? And I know that would have to come with some policy change. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Patrick?
Well, I'm looking at the board as the group that puts together a fair and equitable budget. But then from there, to make sure that every student is given the opportunity to do what they want to do, really comes from the schools, and the school's responsibility to do that. It is good for the board to oversee that, to make sure it happens, but it really does come down to the schools. And I trust that our schools are all in pretty good shape in doing that, because I haven't felt like anything has been, hasn't been equitable. I would, when we talk about hiring, though, to make sure that we're hiring teachers to support this question, I would like to see all hires and see what aspect of their position they're actually working with our kids. Somehow, some way, all hires have to have some hand on working with our kids and what they do and what's their impact with our kids. So I would like to actually see that kind of a statement put out with the hires, and that's across the board, from custodians to the people in district office. How is their hiring going to impact working with our kids?
Thanks, Patrick. Sarah?
Can you repeat it?
Yes.
Thanks.
What will you do as a board member to ensure that the budget gives every student a chance to receive all the services they need and the funding necessary to hire experienced teachers and staff to support all students?
So I think, like Patrick said, that we need to kind of look back to the schools on this, and we need to listen to the teachers, what their needs are, tools and resources that they may need to help all children. I think we also need to listen to our parents and our community, what they want for their children, and what is expected with public education. And also, like we said, Christine said, listening to the students. Putting that program into place, that's great. I think that's one great policy that they enforce this year. And we also hired four new assistant principals at the elementary level. So I think that's also a good thing that is helping create well-rounded students and helping them with all needs.
Thanks, Sarah. James?
So I think the tricky word here is need, right? And where do you need that? And I think needs have become very subjective now, right? Does the school need to do that, or is that something we could, we want? And I think that's where I think we really need to refocus, is what are wants and what are needs, right? Post-COVID, we've added a ton of things to the schools, a lot of them good, but are they providing the return? Are they serving an actual need? You know, I was having a conversation about panorama surveys. We've done them two years in a row for that same cost of those panorama surveys, which I'm not sure what the need is. I don't understand, I will learn. We could have gave every class in this district, like, four boxes of tissues, right? So those are just kind of like little nuances to the budget. What are needs and what are wants? And what is our return? Are they measurable, right? Can we see it, or do we feel it? You know, I, through a sad situation, became the president of the Sea Dragons, and I ran them through COVID. And what people wanted and what people needed were very different depending on who I talked to day to day. And through the creative team effort, we got through COVID and we had, came out fiscally responsible, because we redefined what we needed as a club and what people wanted. A lot of, a word that's come up a lot across all the answers is equity, right? And in a perfect world, we have unlimited resources and we can provide equity to everybody, but that's not how it works, right? Whenever you have a limited resources and you're talking about equity, you always have to take from one to give to another. That's just how it works with limited resources. So we just got to make sure that we're, what we take and what we give are actually equitable.
Thanks, James. Okay, the next question. Kristin, you will start us off here. Do you have any, do you have ideas on how Penfield can uphold its reputation for excellence and commitment to inclusivity and meeting the diverse needs of every student, including those with exceptional abilities?
Yes. So I think when we talk about meeting the diverse needs of all students, again, that's all-encompassing. I think it goes back to making sure that our kids are seeing themselves in our staff members, they are feeling welcomed and affirmed. I think it's really important that for our kids that are excelling and they want those challenges, that we're ensuring that we're continuing to provide those higher-level academic courses and keep adding when we can, where our funds allow us to allocate for those AP classes that our kids are asking for. I also think it's just really important that when we're making decisions, that we continue to have that common lens. I know that as our cabinet, senior cabinet team, when they come to the table, whether it's HR, whether it's finance, whether it's curriculum, or Equity and Access Office, they're coming with that same lens, and I think that's really important to be having, because then our decisions, similar to what James had said earlier, like, we have so much money, it's limited, right? But when we're coming from all of those different departments with a common lens, the decisions that we make are going to more directly and positively impact all of our kids. So I think just continuing to make sure we have our district focus, our district guidelines, and just our priorities are in order, but always just asking, what's best for kids? How is this going to impact our kids?
Thank you, Kristin. Megan, same question.
Yes, I think that the, as I said in my opening statement, this is the hard work. And we do have a strong reputation, generally speaking, across our communities. Maintaining that through a society that is evolving, is changing, we've talked about COVID, we've talked about just social norms shifting and cultural identities evolving, but also coming to the light to be something that we need to reflect and need to address within our school community. school communities. And to what Kristin said about having an aligned approach is critical. I completely agree with that. What I've appreciated about our school board is that I've heard of heated fellowship, shall we say. And I've heard, in talking to some of them, talking to Tom Putnam, about having real conversation that is critical in thought, that is putting students first, and at the same time, our perspectives are going to lend to, hopefully, a more robust outcome. I want Penfield to continue to be strong, I want us to grow. I love the fact that we have innovative ideas happening here, and then that causes us to possibly shift the budget a little bit. But I think that meeting the needs of all of our students is exactly where the rubber meets the road. It is difficult to have individual and differentiated education for every single student in almost 5,000 student district is really difficult work. And what I believe about our district is that we want to take this on, that we are committed, and that our leadership, I love the fact that we have four assistant principals now in the elementary schools, that we are really committed to doing as best we can. The one thing, to doing the best that we can, but the one thing that I really want to keep emphasizing is student voice in that process. I think we need to do a better job of engaging young people in what they see as their experiences. Community, school groups, cultural groups, sports teams, the student council, from elementary up through seniors.
Thanks, Megan.
I think it's really important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick?
I'm going to ask you to repeat the question for me.
Sure. Do you have ideas on how Penfield can uphold its reputation for excellence and commitment to inclusivity and meeting the diverse needs of every student, including those with exceptional abilities?
Guys are very challenging with our questions tonight. I don't have a lot of experience with this, except for the fact that say, a lot of what Megan just said, and that is it is important to have every focus be on what our kids need. One of the things that I've always functioned with when I worked in the schools is it's easy to address the needs of the kids that stand out so well academically. It's easy to also address the kids that were frequent flyers coming into my office on a daily basis. They're wonderful, wonderful kids, but they also had some trouble understanding the rules sometimes. So what I always just to focus on is taking some way to find out who are our kids in the woodwork? Who are the kids that are not standing out? Who are the kids that we haven't reached yet that we need to reach? So I'm just going to just say, one of the things that I would love to see schools do is what we used to do, is we put up a poster of all the kids in our school, the names of them. And then in a faculty meeting, I had the teachers go around and put a star next to the names of the kids that they had a conversation with, and not just a school conversation, just a regular, general conversation. And this was like a November faculty meeting, so they all had a chance to do this. When we were done, we then took a list of what kids did not have a star next to their name. We tried to find the woodwork kids so that we could reach to them and pull every kid into the envelope of feeling that, here's a teacher that cares about you, here's the impact. And the challenge of the teachers was, these kids don't have a star next to their name. Make sure next month, you could put a star next to their name.
Thanks, Patrick. Sarah?
Yes, I think after talking with community members, parents, that Penfield has actually declined in the academic excellence field, and that is one of my reasons for running for the board. I think basically, we need to get back to the basics. I think we need to focus on reading, writing, math, and again, teaching our kids how to be well-rounded individuals that are going to thrive in this community. I think the academic shift needs to come back to the forefront of education, especially in the public school system.
Thanks, Sarah. James?
I'm going to vote for Pat and Sarah. Much like they both said, obviously. You know, I'm an engineer-trained, so I look at the data, I look at the test results, I look at the trends. You know, and that's why I brought to the attention, from the Board of Education down, right? There's not a lot of experience there. We have one, we'll call him tenured principal in the Skirbner School, the rest are three years, one year, no years, all of our assistant principals are new. And again, I took some heat for saying this, because they don't have experience leading, right? That doesn't mean that they can't be great leaders, right? You can develop great leaders. But in order to develop that, they need the system to do so, right? We got a lot of inexperienced teachers. They needed the support, the development to do that. You know, the Board of Education, our tenured person's going to be five years. So five years' experience down to one-year experience, right? In order to do that, you need to know what worked, what didn't work, right? Now we're developing, reinventing the wheel, and I don't think that doing that and that sort of path is going to help us regain anything. Again, you know, US News, we went from 85th to 125th, we lost 40 spots in two years. Forty-nine point seven percent of our kids, again, in the same study, are college-ready. College isn't end-all, be-all. That's a data point, but it's the trend that's alarming, right? And I agree with Sarah, getting back to the basics. What is a need? What is a want? Where's our money being spent? What is our focus on? And how are we taking the stakeholders' voices, all of them, and really hearing them?
Thanks, James. Chris?
I think as a board and as a community, we need to do everything in our power to help our students grow up to be informed, thoughtful, empathetic human beings who contribute positively to society, right? That's in the mission and vision of the district. I think, you know, and the focus on academics is interesting, because when you look at the honor roll and the high honor roll that is published every year in the high school, there's a startling number of students who are on the high honor roll, overwhelmingly larger than the honor roll. And so it's not that there's not excellence in this district. I think the question is, when students get out in the real world, you know, not everybody's going to make the high honor roll in the real world. And not everyone, you know, in the greater society, not everyone looks like them, not everyone thinks like them, not everyone has the same opportunities that they had here. Not even the students who are in this district had the same opportunities. As you said earlier, you know, that just because we live in a wealthy district doesn't mean everybody has the same opportunities to do all of the things. And so I think, you know, as a board, we drive the policy. You know, we're the ones who will ask the questions that need to be asked. That's our role, is to learn and listen and help the folks who do the work derive solutions to continue to grow.
Thanks, Chris. Megan, we're back to you.
Okay.
Okay, the next question is, what do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education over the next three years?
The role of the board over the next three years is to not lose any more ground, to maintain Penfield's reputation, to keep serving our young people and our students. I know there's a lot of conversation around UPK, so that's not just K through 12, but what are we doing in terms of early education as a community? How do we value that? What do we want that to look like as a larger community? I think that we, I feel like we're repeating ourselves a little bit, but that we have really wonderful aspects to our school district, and yet, we always have some challenges that we're going to keep addressing. What I appreciate about being a member of the school board is that there is a team, that there is a committee, that there's a group that can bounce things off each other, to be thought partners with each other, both folks that are lay from the community and then folks that are educational leaders with a lot of expertise. I feel that building the trust and responsibility of the relationships with the community is one of the biggest things that we have to focus on as a school board over the next three years. And I guess it will also be, for me personally, a journey of learning as well.
Thanks, Megan. Patrick?
Over the next three years, I'm hearing from community members mostly, and that is getting back some of the programs that we all lost when we had to go through COVID. And I know it is easy sometimes to say, you know, that was something that I really didn't like doing and that kind of thing. So since COVID kind of knocked it out, I don't really have to work on getting it back. But I think we have to look at, like what Megan said, let's talk to the kids, let's get the kids involved, let's find out what are they missing? What things did they see before that they no longer have in front of them? And getting some of the classes back, the honors classes back, and find out what's going on to get things back to the shape that we were in prior to COVID. When it comes right down to it, one of the things that I think we have to keep looking at is, I know colleges are changing right now. They're starting to go back to the SATs again. I think we have to look at, what do we do as a school district to best support our kids in being successful when they get into college? What do we do as a school district that when our kids get there, they feel like they have earned the grades that they have gotten? They feel like they have the resilience and the coping skills to move forward with life? That is so important for schools to engage. One of the things that I did as a principal, I had peer-to-peer programs where kids heard from peers, listened to peers, and that was so important and so helpful for those kids to step into the high school. And peer-to-peer programs will also continue to work, I think, as we prepare kids getting ready for the college life.
Thanks, Patrick. Sarah?
I completely agree with Patrick in that we need to focus on making sure those students that want to go to college are ready for college, providing them skills to be resilient, coping mechanisms, be well-rounded students. And I also want to focus on teacher retention. Like James mentioned, there's a lot of turnover lately with our district, and I want to just listen to the teachers. I want them to be happy to go to work every day and teach our kids, because, like I said, they're the backbone. And if they're not happy teaching our kids, we're in a big, big trouble. So I think those are two big focuses, and I think just, again, with creating resiliency with the kids is holding them accountable. Are we giving them enough homework? Because when they do go to college, those ones that want to, are they going to be lost? Because they're not getting the homework that they once had, maybe five or six years ago. So looking at these different areas, I think is a big priority on the board.
Thanks, Sarah. James?
Yeah, much like they said, right? I think we just need to take a pause, right? And see where we're at, and see what changes, you know, are working out of COVID. We've had enough, not the ideal amount of time, but we've had enough time to see, like, okay, we started this, we tried this, did it work? Can we make an adjustment? And make it fact-based, right? Data-based, you know? We referenced that teacher survey. And I live in a neighborhood full of teachers, and they're probably stunned. I used to go home, see them in the pool in summer, and then just be mad at them, you know? Now I go home and get them a beer and ask them if they need anything, because it's stressful, right? And that's showing up in the teacher surveys, that's showing up in our admins. I think it's showing up on our Board of Education, right? We're losing everybody across the thing. So I think we need to take a pause and understand why. Like, what can we do to create stability? Because without stability, no matter how good the programs are, no matter how good the data is, no matter how good anything is, without the stability of the teachers, you know, and we say teachers, but there's teaching assistants, there's clerical staff, there's the admins, there's the bus drivers, right? We've all heard about the bus driver issues. There's countless people. We need all of them, right? We need to know, we need the guy that fixes the heat in here to fix the heat, and he's been doing it for 20 years. I don't want him leaving. He might leave, and now we got a cold thing, pay more. There's a lot to it, right? My next three years is going to be about stability and communication, you know, and community building, right? I want everybody to, you know, and I'm just reading the key words. I want everybody to understand that they're part of this, and actually feel like part of this. Bring in parent engagement, grandparent engagement. Both my mother and my mother-in-law spend a ton more time in the school probably than I do. So those are the kind of things that I want, is stability and growth from that stability.
Thanks, James. Chris?
Yeah, I'll agree with James there. I think that stability's important. I think, you know, education, as a general rule, moves pretty slowly, because there's all sorts of regulations involved and all these kinds of things. And then when COVID hit, all of a sudden, nobody was ready for it, and we didn't know what to do. As parents, we didn't know what to do, as a district, we didn't know what to do, teachers didn't know what to do, because we'd never had to teach on Zoom. We'd never had to, you know, operate in a world where, you know, students were there every day. And so I think being able to sort of take a step back and say, all right, what did we learn from the last three years? And listening, listening to everyone involved in the process. In talking with board folks over the last couple of weeks, it's a lot of listening. It's a lot of, how can we best support what you're all doing in the classroom? And then I think, as that, over time, becomes accountability. And it's okay. So now we've listened, we've made some changes, we've kept some things, we've moved some things around. Then, let's, like, where is the accountability? How do we assess, all right, has this worked? You know, and what are the metrics that we want to look at now? I mean, is it, you know, college placements? Is it, you know, whether folks are coming back to Penfield? There's lots of things that we can look at that are metrics that, down the road, we need to figure out where that accountability is. So listening, communication, as I mentioned earlier, making sure that, you know, everyone knows what's going on, and then the accountability piece.
Thanks, Chris. Kristin?
I think first and foremost, as Chris mentioned, excuse me, it's listening, like, making sure we're listening to all of our stakeholders. We need to continue to do that as a board. I think we also need to continue to build trust and transparency with our stakeholders, because we need them to have our backs and we need to have their backs. And then obviously, as a board, our primary thing is creating policy. So continue to create policy. And then also, looking at both ends of education, looking at, like Meg said, UPK, but also looking at the high school end and continuing to move that needle forward. Looking at UPK, what does that look like? Now, that's not going to be solved in three years, because as we know, like, it takes a long time, it's more of a five-year process. But if that's something we're looking to do as a district, and there have been conversations about it, to bring that into district, we would still need our community-based organizations, because by state law, we have to have a percentage that are our CBOs. But what does that look like? What are the steps that we need to put in place to put UPK in Penfield and own that? And at the same time, like, at the higher end, what does post-high school look like? How are we going to ready our kids? How are we going to give them the skill sets that they need? How are we going to build emotionally intelligent children who will be young adults that are functioning, whether they choose to go on to college, whether they choose to go into the trades, whether they choose to go into the military? Are we partnering with our community organizations to support those people and those choices that our kids are making? And also, our staff. Like, we need to be diversifying our staff, and we need to retain our diversified staff, so that our kids are seeing themselves in their staff. And that means across the board, from our clerical all the way up to our administration team.
Thanks, Kristin. Believe it or not, we're at our final question, unless you want more. No? You don't want any more? Okay. So Megan, we're going to start, or, sorry, Patrick, we're going to start with you this time. Final question. Some in the community feel that an emphasis on inclusivity and the social-emotional needs in Penfield schools undermines our longstanding tradition of academic excellence. Do you see these two goals as conflicting, or do you see them as complementary?
I rarely look at things as conflicting. In this situation right here, I can see very easily how the two can meld together and be a, and complement each other and help us to reach, through conversation and through decision-making and through discussion, a way to pull that all together to reach even a better conclusion than each of them working independently. And I think you're talking about the DEI policy that we have here. And I've read through that, and it really is a wonderful document. And I'm glad that we have it here, and I'd like to see more how that works in our buildings. And I admire that the goal has, the board has pulled that together to to use it as one of the threads that just strengthens our programs.
Thanks, Patrick. Sarah, same question.
Can you repeat it?
Sure.
Thanks.
Some in the community feel that an emphasis on inclusivity and the social-emotional needs in Penfield schools undermines our longstanding tradition of academic excellence. Do you see these two goals as conflicting, or do you see them as complementary?
I believe that they should be complementary. I think it's about balance. I think we need to focus, again, on the academics, but we also need to focus on including every student, that they all deserve a right to an equal education. And I just think we need to make sure that one isn't taking from the other. That I feel like a lot of kids, like I said, a lot of kids feel that they haven't been tested rigorously through the program, not getting as much homework, parents are seeing, and just kind of taking a lackadaisical approach with some of their education and saying that, oh, I can hand it in at a different date, or, you know, it doesn't matter, the test scores. And that type of approach and attitude that we're fostering with our children, I don't think is going to help them in the long run. So I do think that we need to find a balance with both of those.
Thank you. James?
I think it's weird that we think social-emotional learning is something new, that we need to carve out a time during the day for our teachers to sit our kids down and teach them how to be socially and emotionally intelligent. Teacher's been doing this since I was a kid. Some of the best lessons I learned socially, emotionally were from teachers, from way too many visits to the principal's office. Our teachers are humans, right? They're not going to see a kid and struggle and not do something, right? And I think what we're doing is we're structuring everything, and we're taking that human element out of it, right? You know, you sit in a circle and you talk and this and that, and yeah, it helps, right? There's good and there's positive. But that time, is that time better spent doing something else? Can we naturally integrate SCL? You know, and to the inclusivity, you know, what does that mean? Should we, is that, we have to be inclusive to each other? Or is that the school, right? As a school district, yeah, of course, we should be inclusive. We should include everybody. But some of the situations I see where we're forcing inclusivity on elementary kids, saying they have to play with that kid, or else they're going to get in trouble, or you can't say no to that kid, right? We don't have an inherent right as humans to have to include everybody. Do we try to? Yeah. Is there reasons to exclude? I know I'm going to catch flack, but of course there is, right? There's safe, there's comfort, there's trust. Those are all naturally human feelings that we just have. You know, and I'll go back to the SCL thing. My daughter, she wants to learn academics. She wanted to skip the SCL community building to go see her tutor to catch up on academics, because she was struggling, and that's her priority. And those are the sort of things, like, I doubt she's alone, you know what I mean? So that's my thought on that.
Thanks, James. Chris?
I think the thought of it sort of undermining academic excellence is weird to me, because I think they're linked, and I think you can't unlink them. Because I think in order for students to be successful in the classroom, outside of the classroom, they need to be supported, they need to be seen, they need to be heard and acknowledged and met where they are. That's hard when you're in a class of 25 students who all have very different needs and very different requirements and come from different backgrounds and don't all necessarily have the supports, structures outside of the classroom that everybody else does. I think that they're linked and need to be linked, to me. I think they're part and parcel of the same thing. If we're talking about, you know, benefiting the whole student and being, you know, a comprehensive educational experience, having that social-emotional piece tied into the academic experience, both need to happen. We need to find a way that they both need to happen. Are there only so many hours in the day? Yes, there are. But it's imperative that, to raise children who are able to go out in the real world and survive, we need to have a little bit of both.
Thanks, Chris. Kristin?
Yeah, so I would agree. I love the word you used, Chris, that they're linked. You cannot have a child that is academically successful if they don't feel like they're part of that fabric of that school community. And you cannot have a child that is academically successful if they're struggling emotionally. And if you are unsure of why you can't, you can talk to many children here in Penfield who sadly haven't felt excluded, who have sadly had to bury a friend, who has sadly committed suicide because they were struggling. We have to have those pieces in place to support our kids. We are a melting pot here in Penfield, hopefully continuing to evolve. And I truly believe that as human beings, we want our kids to evolve. And you only do that by surrounding yourself with people that think differently than you, that have different beliefs than you, that have different identities than you do, because that's how you're going to grow and evolve as a human being. So yes, I agree that it really needs to be naturally integrated into our curriculum. But, and also, I think time does need to be set aside. I work with second graders. They don't know how to always share. They don't always know how to accept kids that feel different than them or think differently than them. And how do we help our kids be productive members of society that are caring, that are respectful, and value other people's identity if we're not the ones helping to change them? Because as we've heard, there are families in Penfield that unfortunately don't have those experiences. So as educators, that's part of our job to do that. So I agree with Chris that they are definitely linked.
Thanks, Kristin. And Megan?
Yes, it's funny what Chris was saying, a great word, as Kristin agreed, but it's not a binary question, and the question itself makes me a little sad that it was asked in that, not, they aren't just complementary, but they're absolutely necessary and critical for each other. And I think academic excellence feels tricky, because we have to ask ourselves, who's academic excellence? And what I value about public education is that it's doing its very best to meet every individual child where they're at. What is the definition of that? Who is it for? I have three kids. All three of them would define academic excellence differently. And I think there's great value in that. I try to support their own learning and education. I want as much as possible for a public system to meet them where they're at individually, and yet we know we're in a system. I keep coming back to this is not easy work. And I want our children to feel included, feel a part of something, feel a sense of belonging. We are, I'm not interested in raising folks that isolate themselves. People may be introverted, but people that isolate themselves is not good for their health and well-being. I want our young people to feel like they are part of something, some type of community, whether that's a subgroup or culture here at Penfield, or their larger community. But I believe in things like equity grading. I believe in the opportunity to ask those that aren't represented well in our community, how their experience is in the school district, sorry. And Kristin said that really beautifully, I feel, about how families, we need to uplift voices that typically we aren't hearing. So, yeah.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, so we've come to the end of the question and answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have an opportunity to make a closing statement of not more than two minutes per person. Those summations will be made in the reverse order from the opening statements. So we're going to begin the closing statements with Kristin.
Thank you. First of all, I would just like to thank everyone for joining tonight and taking time out of your schedules and committing to, if you're elected, to run for the board or be on the board. I appreciate you wanting to give back to our school community that my children are a part of. I'd also like to thank Amy and Kathleen, also on Penfield TV. In closing, I would just say that my experience that I've had here as a Penfield parent, as a board member, and an experienced elementary teacher, which really has brought me back here tonight to ask for your continued confidence and support. It would honestly be my great pleasure to continue to serve on the Penfield School Board to ensure that all of our students and our staff needs are met as we continue to navigate all of the challenges that we have, both our current challenges and our future challenges. I read a quote once that said, "A school is a building which has four walls with tomorrow inside." And that tomorrow does indeed belong to all of us. When we ask what is best for all kids and keep that as our lens, we're always doing the right thing. As a community member, I am committed to working collaboratively, excuse me, to giving back to our tomorrow. I will continue to seek to understand and listen empathetically to all stakeholders. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for considering giving me your vote.
Thanks, Kristin. Chris?
I would also like to thank everybody who made it through an hour and 40 minutes of this. That's dedication, friends. I am really excited to learn from all of these folks. These six people at this table tonight have said to you, the Penfield community, that we are ready and willing to take on the responsibility of guiding the education of our children. That is not a responsibility that any of us take lightly. It means hours upon hours, listening and learning and advocating and collaborating and wrestling with big problems and small problems and problems of all sizes. But the reason that I said yes, I would like to serve on the Board of Education is because I believe in Penfield, as we all do. And I believe that because of the support that this community provides year after year, we can be a model district for how suburban school districts can be better and how we can do better. I want our teachers to go back to their alma maters. I worked at schools that have education programs, and we loved teachers coming back. And I want them to talk to future teachers about how great Penfield is and how their work transforms lives in fun and unique and special ways. I want to high-five bus drivers at Wegmans. Like, I want our students to go out in the real world and be proud of this community for showing them how to live with honesty and integrity. I mean, one of our core commitments as a district is, all students belong to all of us. Let's live that commitment.
Thanks, Chris. James?
I didn't write a closing statement. I think I did that to kind of be symbolic, right? And years passed, right? This was the only thing a lot of candidates did. And we cover a lot in this hour and 40 hours. You know, we covered academics, SCL, diversity, equity, inclusion, budget, music, arts, teachers, board work, right? It's impossible for anybody to vote based on anything solely what they learned today, right? I encourage you to, you know, I have a couple of public gatherings. I encourage everybody to go to everybody's public gathering and really learn, right? You know, I talked about the 2,445 people that voted. That's a really low number, and it's disappointing, right? I want to engage with the community. I don't want to have a closing statement. But what really stood out to me tonight was that I kind of want to do it all over. Every one of my answers I changed, listening to everybody on the table, looking at my notes and scribbling down, and, you know, I just want to do it again, right? And I can only do that again if you come out and talk to me. Everybody knows I'm active on Facebook as a commenter. We have a Facebook page. Sarah and I didn't know each other before this. We realized that this is an immense amount of work that is just, can't do alone, right? And I've learned a lot through that. So just come out and see us, come out and talk. Nothing that we say today can't be changed, right? We can go deeper and more in-depth. We can learn, we can adjust. And that's what I want to do on the Board, right? I want to learn, I want to adjust, I want to know what I don't know, and really just make it better. And be an example for the community, the example for my children, right? I think anybody who knows me in high school would be shocked. I know there's teachers in Penfield that are going, no way, right? But here I am, learning, adjusting, and growing.
Thanks, James. Sarah?
So I did prepare a closing statement. However, I had a Penfield mom reach out to me this morning with a message. So I'm going to read that, because I think it represents the quiet majority of families in our district and why specifically I'm running. "Penfield mom here desperately seeking a candidate that shares more of a balanced approach in academics in this district. Post-pandemic, Penfield Central Schools is not the same as pre, and a lot of us feel this is a due to the shift away from academics. Penfield, for example, Penfield doesn't even print report cards or include GPAs on the digital ones. My seventh grader says things weekly like, grades don't matter in middle school. You can just retake it if you don't like your grade. You can always hand in it after the due date. No one even looks at state scores anymore. We certainly haven't, would never taught our daughter to have that kind of attitude towards school or education. And I think it is an unintended consequence of some of the priorities the current administration has focused on in the last four years. Webster Middle Schools still take a reading course, as well as an English course that teaches actual grammar rules, subject verb conjugation, et cetera. It's my understanding Penfield changed this in 2023, but why? Meanwhile, K through five has no grades, has moved away from the 1-2-3 scale of New York State Mastery, and now only gives two report cards a year with no actual testing or tangible level listed." I'm going to skip over so I can get it all in. "We all want to create well-rounded students, but it seems like as a district, we have set our goals solely on social-emotional learning and lost focus on the academic rigor that many parents took into consideration when they decided to raise a family here. I talked to neighbors who have kids in their late twenties who can't believe the shift away from the academic excellence in the districts that they have chosen. That coupled with no school community, my Bay Trail seventh grader has never had a field trip, a field day, a pep rally, a dance, or anything that used to make them feel part of a school community, seems like we're headed in a terrible direction. I worked in the public schools for 13 years, and these top-heavy, non-community-centered, soft-on-academic policies do not work."
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, Patrick?
Well, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that I'm sitting here with five other people that have done a fabulous job tonight. Excellent, excellent people. I don't think you can make a mistake in anybody that you vote for. Again, I'd like to thank all of you for your interest in watching this program. I hope we were able to communicate our interest in being a part of the Penfield School Board. As a member of the School Board, I have noted in my communication how I plan to be child-centered, family-focused, and community-minded. My direction for decision-making is to support our school leadership in doing all we can do to support the children and their families while keeping a reasonable eye on spending. I plan to be present and visible, to actively support all the wonderful things our schools do. I hope to see our children making anchor memories, things that they will never forget throughout their lives. In my years as an educational leader, I was part of a team where we developed peer leadership programs using the 40 developmental assets from Search Institute. I'd like people to look that up. That's a wonderful program. Also, we did Surviving Adolescence for parents through the Dr. Michael Popkin. And he does a great job with working with parents on just anything. If you say you want a parenting handbook, look up Dr. Michael Popkin. These programs are a great service to our school community. We're able to reach the kids in the woodwork and support parents in establishing independent children. I am an approachable person, willing to listen and learn while also keeping my focus on supporting children in our community. I understand it takes a collaborative community to make a school district strong and intentionally inviting. And I thank you for considering me to be on the School Board, and I hope you are willing to trust me with your vote.
Thanks, Patrick. Megan?
And again, thank you to everybody. I'm grateful for this opportunity. I know that across our community members will have different takes on how the school district operates. And a school district is primarily a place of learning, yes, and it's much more than that. It serves as a crucial pillar of our community, often representing its values, aspirations, and our future. It is a community hub. School districts are often at the center of community social and cultural life. We host events, sports games, performances, meetings, bringing together different sectors of our community. It is an economic driver. Our school districts play a significant role in the local economy. They employ teachers, administrators, support staff, and contractors, contributing to creation, job creation, and economic activity. And additionally, the quality of school district can influence property values and attract businesses and residents to an area. It is a safety net for many children. Schools provide a safe and supportive environment beyond just education. They offer resources such as meals, counseling services, health screenings, and support for students with special needs. School personnel often service trusted adults who can identify and address issues like abuse, neglect, or mental health challenges. It is a cultural identity. Schools within a district may reflect the cultural diversity of the community they serve. They celebrate traditions, languages, customs, promoting inclusivity and understanding among students from various backgrounds. And in doing so, they help preserve and enrich the culture of a community. And as I said before, an innovation hub. School districts are increasingly becoming centers for innovation and education. They pilot new teaching methods, technologies, and curriculum designs, driving progress and adaptation to meet the evolving needs of students in a rapidly changing world. In essence, a school district is
In essence, the school district is not just a business or a place of learning. It is dynamic and multifaceted and impacts our entire community. Bottom line, the school district should matter to all of us beyond the academic purpose. I hope there is great voter turnout, just as James said, because this matters to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. So thank you to all of you. That is it for our presentation this evening. A reminder to the public that the school budget vote and board election is Tuesday, May 21st, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Penfield High School West Gym at 25 High School Drive. Thank you all. Have a great evening. Take care.